Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:30 PM. And now I'd like to call on Deputy Mayor Doran Boss to give the land acknowledgement, please.
I'd like to acknowledge that the rural municipality of St. Andrews is located on Treaty One Territory, the traditional lands of the Injunabee Cree, OJie Cree, Dakota and Dene Peoples, and the national homeland of the Red River M著. We respect the spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations Inuit and M著 people in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, collaboration.
Thank you. It's not on the agenda, but I do have an announcement. It's sad. With sadness, I wish to inform council of the passing of Doreen Oliver. She is the wife of Bud Oliver, Maselkirk's longest-serving mayor. Doreen was very involved in the community, received many awards for her accomplishments. So on behalf of council, I wish to pass on condolences to Bud and his family. Thank you. Item number three, adoption of the agenda. Be resolved that council adopt the agenda as presented or amended with the addition of the following items. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Slaker. Seconded by Counselor Landor. Are there any additions? Are there any?
Sorry, there was an addition. I'm not sure if you've seen it or not.
Yes, the addition was the variation order number 1412023. Thank you. And it's on the agenda, and that was posted as well. Okay, all in favor? Eric.
Aye.
Well, I apologize. Counselor Hunt is attending vice. Now I'd like to open the public hearings. Welcome, everyone. The hearings will proceed as follows. Red River planning staff, Mr. Eno, will present the application. The applicant will then make the presentation on the application. Those registered in support will make a presentation. Those opposed will make a presentation. The applicant will then have the opportunity to respond to comments or concerns raised by council or any of the presenters. At the end of each presentation, council may ask for clarification but will not enter into debate. Please note, all person speaking must address the chair. At the end of the presentations, council will close the public hearing. Once a public hearing is closed, there will be no more presentations accepted on the matter. Council will then consider each matter separately and provide a decision. That's all done at the end of all the hearings. So thank you, and we'll now proceed. Be resolved that council hereby open the public hearings for the following planning applications scheduled for January 9, 2024. Conditional use number 392023, variation order number 1382023, variation order number 1322023, variation order number 1352023, and variation order number 1412023. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Doran Boss, Seconder, Counselor Morecki. All in favor? Eric. First item is conditional use number 3920237, Mapleton Bay. Mr. Eno, could you please receive, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Just going to share my screen with all of council. It's like the host needs to give me that authority.
Yeah, okay, one minute.
And for mayor and council, what I propose to do is present the information for both conditional use number 39 and variance number 138. Because the same property in those two applications are linked together, in the sense of efficiency.
Okay, go ahead, Derek.
So the first application is conditional use 39 of 2023, which is for Seven Mapleton Bay. The applicant's proposing to establish a garden suite on the property as within a rural residential zone. So here's the subject property. You can see the existing home from the air photo, as well as to the southwest portion of the property, there's a existing garage. It's a bit of a layout of the property showing the existing garage, which they proposed to remove and demolish and replace it with the garden suites. This is a bit of a layout of the garden suites, showing master bedroom, the second bedroom, laundry kitchen, great room, washrooms. The garden suite would be 36 by 33. It's just under 1,200 square feet in size. And it would be about 25 feet from the front property line, which is the subject of the next application, which is a variance, because the setback requirement is 75 feet. They would have to adhere to the garden suite requirements in Section 3.13 of the bylaw as well. The applicant has noted that they wish to have this on the property to take care of family members. Should council wish to approve this, there are five conditions that are set out for your consideration, both on the screen as well as in your docket. For the variance that's related to this application, also on the same property, is to reduce the front yard's back front accessory building from 75 feet to 25 feet in the rural residential zone. Once again, the subject property, and here is the layout of the property. The yellow highlighted portion is that existing garage, which they're proposing to take down and replace with the garden suite. And it would be about 25 feet or so from the front property line or from the... There's an air photo here that the applicant has provided with a couple little notes on it, showing where the 75-foot front setback line is, which are the driveway, which would be access into their attached garage. And similar to last application, this is all in relation to the to the garden suite that the applicant wants to have on the property to care of family members. The property is a bit of an irregular shape a lot, so it's difficult to maintain that setback there. And there are two conditions, which are standard various conditions. Should council wish to approve this? That's all I have this time, Madam Mayor. If there are any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions for the planner? Okay. Then Kay Montgomery, you're the applicant. Would you like to speak to the application?
I'm sure. Do I need to stand?
Whatever. Make it comfortable.
So yeah, so I'm the current owner at Seven Mapleton Bay. So these are my parents. And the goal, the goal of this is to enable them to have an independent living suite on our properties so that they can age in place in the future. And because there's an existing structure there, like the garage is there, it would be the least disruptive to the property to just replace that structure with a similarly sized structure with that intent.
Hey, council, do you have any questions on the applicant? Okay, Dave or Sue Swinney, I know you're in support. Do you have anything to add?
No, we're the parents, so we're going to be the ones that are going to be in the suite. So and of course, aging a place is pretty important to us to be able to spend our future with our daughter who's a doctor and with our grandkids till such time as we don't need to.
You're aware you'll probably be babysitting, correct?
Yes, there'll be other duties to do.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments by council?
Okay, we'll move on. What's the current dimensions of the garage right now, approximately?
It's 31 by 31. And the proposed layout into that was there. It's about, it's not 100% what we're looking at, but it's just to get the permit in. But it's going to be roughly the same size, probably 33 by 36, but it will be less than 1,200 square feet. And the garage is also on a concrete slab. And the intent is to put it back on the slab. Now, whether we need another variant to do that, I'm not 100% sure. Or we can just build it right on top of that slab, because the slab, of course, has been there for probably 25, 30 years, and the ground underneath the structures is pretty secure. And to take that out and put it on a post and pad is, A, you would have to get rid of the concrete, which we don't want to do. And second, it's going to be more stable than a post and pad, which isn't the best, isn't the best function for the suite.
Mr. Eno, do you have any comments to that, or that will be dealt with? Okay, thank you.
That will be dealt with at the permit stage.
Oh, okay.
So would I need another variant to put the structure on a foundation?
On a permanent foundation, one of the requirements of the secondary, sorry, of the garden suites, it has to be a temporary building, so it can be movable. But we've seen these types of things before coming through our office. So there's various different building solutions you can have a look at.
So it doesn't have to be on post and pads over here?
There's all sorts of different things. I'm not a building expert, so I don't want to speak out of turn too much. But we have seen these types of scenarios.
Yeah, but the question is, would I have to apply for a variance or apply for another application?
Variants would only be needed if you want to do a, or a new foundation, a permanent foundation, so.
Okay.
We've seen people do post and pads, ground screws, all sorts of different things. You may need to have an engineer just confirm whatever you're doing is going to be structurally sound. But once again, that can be dealt with at the permit stage.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I have a question or a comment, I guess. We did a garden suite last year or two years ago when they required a variance, because they were placing it on the same kind of a cement pad, which, to me, this is a post and pad built. You know, if they do require a variance, there's something the council, we should look at as changing this, because you know, like the applicant said, why would you want to tear that out and put down smaller pads to support a building when you have a large pad there that is going to be the same footprint as the existing building going in there? So I think at that time, too, it was also mentioned that we need to streamline some of these, some of this definition in this garden suite area because of, like, I like their comments or their reason for, you know, age in place, grow in place, because I had used the term "a circle of life," because this is going to be continuing on with the family, you know, aging parents living in there, then the applicants, the children will be moving into that place, and their children will be taking care of them. So it's a circle of life as well as grow in place. So we have to be, let this place become more permanent, too. So whether we need to change that in our bylaw or in our development plan, that's something we should look at in the future. So just a comment I have.
I appreciate your comments, and that is what we're thinking, too, because once we are done, of course, it's going to be personal use. And that's what we're looking for. So we were looking at a pretty stable foundation to not put the building on a post and pad that isn't, engineering-wise, isn't the best alternative.
Okay, thank you. Next item is variation order number 1322023417, Shelley Beach Road. Mr. Eno, could you please receive?
Absolutely. So this variance, as you noted, is on the Shelley Beach Road. It's to vary the maximum size of an accessory building from 1,200 square feet up to 3215, as well as to increase the height from 15 to 20 feet. There we go. There's the variance that's just laid out on the table there. Once again, going up in size and going up in building height. So here's the subject property with the air photo. You can see the existing home just to the north at the top of the screen there. And here's a bit of a sketch of the site plan that the applicant has provided, showing the location of the proposed new garage. Should be noted that the applicant did obtain some variances, I was going to say last year, 2022 now, so. To allow for development on a property that doesn't have direct access to an all-weather road, as you know, Shelley Beach is not an unisable road, as well as to increase the accessory structure and building height. But the applicant's building plans that came in were bigger than what they got the variance for in 2022. So that's why this is here. Should council wish to approve this, there are the two standard various conditions that are on the screen in front of you as well as that I think we talked about. So I have this time, Madam Mayor. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for the planner? Kay.
I have one question.
Well, sorry, Counselor Hunt.
So the variance application, the footprint of the garage was the same size, but now there was a second, like a mezzanine added, so that adds to the square foot, correct?
Correct. There's a second floor and a balcony, and the height of the whole thing's gone up as well from 18 to 25.
Right. So the original square footage, I believe, is the same, but just is going higher now, so that does square feet as well as height, right? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Meyer, do you have anything to add to the presentation?
I, good evening. So just a couple corrections. So I had the variance to go from 1,200 to 1,800 square feet back in 2022. So the building footprint is still 36 by 50, but because I added the second level storage, that changed the square footage, hence the 32 change. The mean height has not changed because now, because of that second level storage, the mean height of the trusses is measured from a different location. So the physical building from the outside, other than the front deck, is exactly the same. There's no change in the building. No change in height, because the mean height is just measured from a different location. So that's why there's on paper a different number. The other thing, too, is on the site plan, I've given quite a number of concessions to move the building further and further into my property to give my neighbors more space and not encroach on their property. I mean, the minimum setback is five feet on that. If I would have built that as it was already approved, they would come out the spring and have a building eight feet from their deck. So right now, I'm probably, I think it was like 11 feet plus on the one side and even more on the north side or on the south side. So again, just to reiterate, the physical building will not change. And I've discussed that with my neighbors already, and they were at no issue.
Okay, thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Meyer?
My only question was going to be about your neighbor's view, but obviously, if you've discussed that with them, it doesn't impede on any of their landscape.
I've actually set the building off the lake further, so that if they're sitting on their deck, they're not looking at it.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
So I've taken, I wouldn't want that, so I've given them, you know, full disclosure and...
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Variation order number 1352023, number 2 on 4 Stevens Avenue. Go ahead, Mr. Eno, please.
This is a variance related to progress that I'm doing for Stevens Avenue. It's in relation to an approved subdivision, S232995. It is for the site area, proposed lot one, site width as well as the setback. So within the zone, the required minimums for the site area dimensions are 198 feet for site width, 1.37 acres or 60,000 square feet in size. The applicant, through the approved, conditionally approved subdivision, proposed lot one measures that 800 square feet and 15 foot wide, as well as the side yards for the existing building, 9.5 to 3.7 feet respectively, centered from the 15 feet. So here's the subject property. You can see the air photo, two buildings there. One's the old church, which is on the corner there, and then the existing house. And here is the subdivision plan. We can see the new lot line going down north to south, splitting off the old church structure and the one upstairs, existing building. It should be noted that the one setback of 3.75 feet is taken from the stairs on the east side of the building at the applicant's request, even though the surveyor has noted, here's the intention on the site plan, but that's from the building wall. So just want to make sure that everything is all encompassed within this application. Should council wish to approve this, there are two conditions. These are the standard conditions that is... If this is approved, it would cross off one of the conditions of the subdivision, moving the applicant closer to being able to register the plan with land titles. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Eno? Jennifer Lamb, I see you're here on behalf of the applicant. Is there anything you'd like to speak to on the presentation?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything much that needs to be added to this. Just thank you to your first presentation. I'm here to answer any questions through the reading from the council.
Okay, thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? Okay, hearing seen none. We'll move on to the next one. Variation order number 1412023610 Lockport Road. Mr. Eno, please receive.
Of course, this is variance application 141. As you noted, on Lockport Road, similar to the last one, this variance is related to a condition approved subdivision, file number S232991. The applicant is asking to reduce the site width requirement from the 198 minimum to 154.75 feet for the proposed lot two. So there's the subject property. You can see with, just off to the west, there are some narrow, skinnier lots in the neighborhood, and that's essentially what the applicant is proposing, as you can see on the subdivision plan. And you'll note that the proposed lot two is at 154.75 feet. Let's check off one of those conditions of the conditionally approved subdivision, closer to be able to register the plan with land titles. And should council wish to approve this, there is the standard condition that's...
Great, thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for the planner? I see there's no one signed in on the sheet, just in case. Is there anyone in the audience here on this application? Okay, no one, please. So that's the end of the conditional, of the funding portion. So be resolved that council hereby close the public hearings for the January 9, 2020, forthlining applications. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Bealcorn, Seconder, Counselor Morecki. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution for decision of conditional use number 30392023, where is the applicant owner of tax roll number 308190 has made application for conditional use number 392023 for the premises described in Seven Mapleton Bay. The purpose is for the applicant, property owners are seeking a conditional use approval in order to allow a garden suite use on the subject property. The applicant submitted letter of intent and site plan are attached to the council package. The conditions have been read out by the planner. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Doran Boss, Counselor Slaker, seconded. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. Being carried. Resolution for decision on variation order number 1382023, where is the applicant owner of tax roll 308190 has made application for variation order number 1382023 for the premises at Seven Mapleton Bay. The purpose of the application is to vary the front yard for accessory structure. The two conditions are the standard conditions read out by the planner. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Morecki, Seconder, Counselor Slaker. Any further comments by council? All in favor?
Aye.
Your application's approved. Resolution for decision for variation order number 1322023, where is the applicant owner of tax roll 572800 has made application for variation order number 1322023 for the premises located at 417 Shelley Beach Road. The purpose is to vary the unit area and height for accessory... The purpose is to vary the unit area and height for accessory structures. There now therefore be it resolved that the variation order number one three two two oh two three be hereby approved by council with the following conditions, that the two standard conditions which were read by the planner. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll move that.
Oh, Deputy Mayor Doran Boss, seconded by Counselor Hunt. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. It's been approved. Resolution for decision for variation order number one three five two oh two three. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll two two three three zero zero has made application for variation order one thirty-five two oh two three for the premises described as lots two and four Stevens Avenue. The purpose for the application is to allow reduced side yards for the single-family dwelling and site area and site width for proposed lot one. This variance is a requirement of conditionally approved subdivision application S twenty-three two nine nine five. Now therefore be it resolved that the variation order be hereby approved by council with the following conditions, and the two conditions were read by the planner. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Feeblecorn, Seconder, Counselor Slicker, any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution for decision for variation order number one four one two oh two three. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll two four four five five zero has made application for variation order number one forty-one two oh two three for the premises described as six ten Lockport Road. The purpose is to reduce the minimum site width for proposed lot two within the AR agricultural restricted zone. The requested variance in this application is part of the conditions within the conditionally approved subdivision application S twenty-three two nine nine one. A subdivision application map has been submitted by the applicant, which is attached to this report. Now therefore be it resolved that this variation order be hereby approved by council with the following condition. That this variance is for what is proposed in the application. Any further changes will require a new variance approval. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Feeblecorn, Seconder, Counselor Moreki, all any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That ends the funding portion. Does everyone require a five-minute reset? Oh, you're free to leave.
Just like, can I have a question?
Uh, well, the public. Okay, item five point one, draft December twelfth, twenty twenty-three council meeting minutes. Be resolved that council adopt the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three council meeting minutes as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Slicker, Seconder. Counselor Landor, is there any errant or emissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item five point two, draft December eighteenth, community of the home minutes. Need resolve that council receive the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three community of the home minutes as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Feeblecorn, Seconder, Deputy Mayor Doran Boss, are there any errors or omissions? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Item five point three, draft January second, special council meeting minutes. Need resolve that council adopt the January second, twenty twenty-four special council meeting minutes as presented. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll move them.
Counselor Hunt, seconded by Counselor Feeblecorn. Any errors or omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item. Just to add something to this. Next item is reception of delegations. Tornado haulers, twenty-five, you're both present. The two gentlemen are here. May I call upon you to give your presentation? Council, we were provided with your site performance agreement review and the conditional use. Or Braden, are you speaking to this matter first?
Uh, if you'd like, Hardy, I don't know if you have any opening statement. I did pass them along, the site performance agreement and the conditional use resolution. So just quickly going over the site performance agreement that was in the agenda there, they've met all the conditions that were required, save for number nine, which is to review the conditions in conditional use. What was the number? I forget the number here. But then in the certified resolution, we had items five, six, and that was it to review. So I guess essentially, the principal building, the construction shall commence in twenty twenty-three, as well as the landscaping, fencing, and privacy slats to be addressed. That's all that needs to be addressed by the applicant today. Everything else has been met, so.
Okay, thank you. So would you like to speak to the construction of the principal building shall commence in twenty twenty-three, and our our papers say to be addressed by the applicant? So would you like to advise council the status?
Actually, right now, we are doing piles and foundation, and this week we are doing starting piles and stuff. And from the bank even, we have only finished this building, have to have to finish this building by December twenty twenty-four. So by that, and I think whatever the the condition was, it was in October. But we are finishing, we can try to finish by October, but the bank mortgage we have till twenty twenty-four December. So this is two months.
If I can add to that, I believe the building plans changed a little bit, and the building footprint has increased.
Doing a bigger building now.
That's correct.
They're adding a whole building in it.
So with the bigger building, will be additional tax revenue. It's a bonus, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? Anything to add? Because we've gotten a very detailed report, and I thank you for coming. Is there any further questions of the two gentlemen? Everybody's happy. Go ahead.
For the fencing, what's the status of the like the secured area of the of your compound there?
We bring close to the where the building is gonna be. We can attach to the building from both sides. So one side is gonna be gate from the building, and other side we are attaching to the the building. So that's why we don't have a coast to the front. So that's why we are, when we have the building up, like even the framing, then we can attach to it.
Counselor Moreki?
Yeah, I just have one question. You've got a large pile of dirt. Uh, yes, what are your plans with that? Is that a, is it gonna be moved shortly or?
We we already marched that lot.
Yes.
Yes, we already marched that lot. There was three lot. We already marked, like combined all together now.
Right.
And in summer, we're gonna take that pile out, and then we can fix that. We have to put the gravel on.
The third lot as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna put the soil back there or?
No, we're gonna take it up. That is not add for grade. So we have to follow whatever the grade is, whatever the height we have on the plan. So we have to follow those elevations. So we have to take it up.
Take it.
Council members, do you have any further questions? Brandon, do you have anything else to add?
No, I do drive by the site every day on my way home and to work. So I have seen the development of the fence along the way with the privacy slats going up and the consolidation of all three lots. Tornado haulers are very expedient on that, getting that done in a very short timeframe, so I'm glad to see that. And yeah, everything else has been in compliance, and I have nothing else to add, really.
Well, thank you. On behalf of the council, I think we're all in agreement. Thank you for being so expedient, following all the conditions in a timely fashion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next second, bylaw and policies, bylaw number four, we need more private approach bylaw, third reading. You resolve that council give third reading to bylaw four three eight for being the private approach bylaw as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Slicker?
I'll second that.
Counselor Feeblecorn. Everyone, just to confirm, everyone had a chance to read the whole bylaw? Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
I just had one question in regards, I couldn't find a cost of who's paying for the culvert in the bylaw. For widening the approach, you would expect there to have to be a wider culvert. Who's paying for that culvert?
So is this in relation to the agricultural approach widening program or just in general? If it's in general, it's the applicant that needs to pay for the culvert.
If we're talking about a agricultural culvert, and it needs to be widened for, you know, their equipment that's gotten huge over the years.
Yep.
Is the RM covering this cost for the widening of like putting in a larger culvert?
So as part of the item nine point O, as included in the third reading for this bylaw, there is the agricultural approach widening program. If this is to be enacted, if council decides on a monetary amount to put into this fund for the program, that would be utilized to support these culverts and the widening of the approaches until the amount in that fund or program has been reduced. At that point, there would no longer be a program for the year, and so it would be on farmer or whoever the applicant would be to cover the costs themselves.
But in the in the past, the the applicant had been responsible for purchasing the extension and the coupler to extend to the pipe. That's the way the program had worked in the past.
The so they would apply. Okay, so the nine point O, the new inclusion of the item, is an administrative administrative requirement for what the agricultural approach widening program would look like as fully spelt out in the in the bylaw. So we have now made it a requirement that they need to pull an application, which was not required in the past. If council would like to see any of these items changed or revised, absolutely. This is just how administration would see it.
Well, I know that this was, it's my understanding, this was added our last reading because it's something that was done previously by previous councils. Is there, where is the money that's up? Why do I want to torment the farmer? Now he has to get a permit. I'm actually not sure why. Did I understand your statement to that?
So it just all systematically, like every application requires a permit for tracking purposes and GIS inventory, things like that.
And you're gonna have to pay money for that permit.
Just for the permit.
But we didn't do that previously.
We have undocumented private approaches where approaches were installed, not to grade, or I can't say for certain if they were installed correctly or not. This is to make sure that everything is done as per procedure, following all general approach installation. So we have our engineering department that goes and does a survey of the approach. They'll install the the stakes to ensure that the grade on the approach and the culvert is correct. This would follow the similar procedure systematic and helps to keep track of how many were done in the year because there is a specified limit.
I have a comment on that. So I agree with that comment about, like, the RM itself doesn't go get a permit when we change a crossing on a road or any other type that we change. I can understand maybe making an application, so you have the paperwork, but to charge because the purpose of charging is to make sure the culvert is placed properly at the proper depth and the proper size and installed properly. We are the, we are, we, the RM is the one doing it. So of course, it's gonna be installed properly. So I can understand if your reasoning for having requiring for paperwork, fine, then an application to be made to track it. But there should be no charge for it because the same process is happening when we're doing it ourselves. We don't charge ourselves to go out and do and change a culvert, so.
To add to that, to add to that, the bare minimum would be the work required for the application itself. If decided to waive the application fee, that would be up to council, but we would require the paperwork to track all the applications.
I understand. I don't have a problem with that, and I think that's a good idea. That's good for your administration purposes, so thank you.
Counselor Landor, you're in favor?
Yeah, I'd still like to advocate for the RM not paying for the cost of the culverts. I think it's up to the responsibility of the landowner or the farmers to cover that cost. I don't think we should be covering that cost for the culvert extensions.
Counselor Slicker?
I I would say I'm not understanding why the item is changed to this in the first place. Same scenario.
I can't exactly answer that question. I don't know why it was initially enacted by the previous council. I do have the previous bylaw with me. If it was just a very brief clause, not specific, this helps to kind of bring it in line to what it was previously, but spelt out very clear. It's just essentially clears clears up item that was in the previous bylaw.
I can give a little bit of history on it. So crossings were installed on half miles of of most farm properties years and years and years ago of of a certain width to require for the machinery to enter the field. Over the years, as we all know, farming equipment has gotten much larger. So now the farmer has to pull into the ditch in order to make that turn in wrecking the ditch and that sort of stuff. So this is why these crossings need to be widened. A lot of times, the crossing is the point of a problem, whether it be silted in. Every time a moor goes in and out of the ditch, they come over that crossing, so the grass gets composted. So it's a good idea to have those crossings cleaned out. Anyway, that is a lot of times a source of backed up water. Again, it had been mentioned that farmers pay a lot of taxes, and the assessment was probably forty percent on farm property last assessment go around. They pay a lot of taxes on land that they can't access when it rains. They don't get snow removal in the wintertime. They don't get gravel. They don't get dust control. So this is something we can give back to the farmers for the taxes that they do pay on the land.
Thank you. Counselor Feeblecorn?
Just just to kind of touch on what Lori had already said, I also had a farmer who got in touch with me. You know, the mill rate didn't change last year, obviously, but the their land assessment values upwards of forty-two percent. And like Lori said, Counselor Hunt said, you know, equipment, these approaches were made back when equipment was light and small, and now that their equipment is getting heavier and wider, you know, they need those wider approaches to get to their their land, and and they pay a lot of taxes for that land. I think having some money set aside to 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 cover some of these widening and extensions. Favor.
Counselor Slicker?
Do we have any idea like what what the report cost would be?
So as a rough estimate, a eight-meter extension for a four hundred and fifty diameter culvert, very standard, is roughly a thousand dollars. Now, that's not to say that these private approaches for the agricultural approaches would be widened by eight meters. That's pretty significant. But it's a fair medium where some culverts may be six hundred millimeters and a thicker steel gauge, a possibility of an increase of of cost, but as a rough estimate, eight-meter extension is a thousand dollars.
Counselor Slicker?
And we have no record of how many people we've done it for.
I couldn't give you an exact record. It wasn't tracked previously. Having worked in public works before, I have seen a couple of these. But they never exceeded the previously implemented twelve per year, maybe around five on year as an average in my time, having worked there anyway. Yeah.
I know the budget. I believe it was seventy-five thousand dollars was in the budget, which is pretty serious for culverts. Is that where these culverts go to or?
That's for culverts for our own stock in our own yard. Now, if they're utilized for this program, that's up to the discretion of council, if an additional amount would be set aside. That would be up to.
What is, so is that where this money comes out of?
No.
We have to have a new fund.
Yeah, because those culverts are just for general use everywhere. This is a more specific program.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Counselor Feeblecorn?
Now, is it possible to reuse culverts that were, you know, might have good sections that were either dug up or culvert section that's been cut and we're able to still reuse that?
If it's reusable, absolutely. The only difficulty with that sometimes with the coupler, if it's not cut appropriately, sometimes changes need to be made. But if we can reuse it and it's still in good condition, like twenty-plus years' life, absolutely. Yeah.
Counselor Slicker?
I would say for your comment about, yeah, evaluating my way up, I even I forgot. If you're looking at a thousand dollars, that's at least get a count of and the application form. If I I think maybe the office, the administration maybe should be paid that fourteen of it by the farmer for that fee. I feel that if you have to put the money out, then that's just a little bit of money, and that makes their accountability maybe a little bit more burned up. But let's try it for a year and would that. But let's try it for a year and, uh, well, that way we'll have a tracking record of what's going on. And see where we're at this time next year.
Deputy Mayor Doran Boss?
I'm gonna have to, uh, agree with Councilor Feeblecorn, Councilor Hunt and, and Counselor Slaker and some of the comments that they made. Uh, farming is a huge part of the arm of St. Andrews and, uh, it is, uh, something that we can certainly ultimately. And, uh, it's not a, a massive amount of money, it's up to twelve. And Braden's already saying that there hasn't been a time that's gone through, I think this would be a nice gesture and I do agree with you on the application portion. Pays for some of the administration cost and time. So, uh, I don't think a permit's needed, maybe an application would be a fair way to go.
Counselor Mondo? The RM, uh, Public Works Department is putting these things in though, so we're expending costs already. Associated with this to put, uh, gravel, to drive our trucks there, manpower, uh, I, I think we still need to cover the cost. Yes, farming is a, a extremely expensive endeavor, coming from a farming background. Uh, yes, the equipment has gone, uh, overboard in size in the last, uh, twenty years, so is the cost. But also the cost of this, uh, land that they're working has gone up thousands of dollars per acre, so, uh, they will cut more than cover the cost. If they ever, uh, are to retire or to sell that property, so I think that a farmer that's, uh, can afford a million dollar tractor can afford a thousand dollar culvert.
I got another comment, once again, that's not the issue here, the issue is just that. Uh, you know, as far as the labor comes out of wages and fuel, so that time has already been paid for. Uh, whether the machine is sitting or, or not, but like I say, at the same time, um, preventive maintenance is done on the crossing. Uh, usually there's not gravel put back on the crossing because it is a mud crossing on a mud road. And like has been mentioned, uh, farmers don't get gravel on the road, dust control, snow, snow removal, we're saving money all throughout the year and on those kinds of items, so. Like, um. Deputy Mayor Doran Boss has said it's something we can give back to the farmers for the high taxes they pay and the assessment has gone up on the, on the land and the money we took in on taxes was on that assessment. In, increase because we didn't raise the tax mill rate, so. Again, it's something we can give back to the farmers and give back to the community. And, uh, it's, is, is a limit on it, so it's not gonna go overboard.
Counselor Feeblecorn?
Um, just to confirm, these, these approaches are, um, owned by the RM, right?
Yes, they're on municipal.
Right, this is municipal property, approaches are municipal property, okay, so this is just maintenance to municipal property that.
Yeah, instead of accommodating the farm.
Right.
Because a lot of the farmers over the years, I've been on council, they, they maintain their ditches, they. Claim the, there's a lot of damaged culverts by, you know, graders and lawnmowers and stuff, so, um. I, I, I agree.
Right, these are private approaches, this is RM property, these approach.
They're on municipal property. Counselor Slaker?
Is, is, is an idea to this, that we put a limit for one year?
We do, it says twelve.
The twelve, okay, and that only twelve can come forward this year, okay.
Yeah, as Brendan said in the past, five can.
That's what it was previously, just add, it was previously twelve or unless that budgeted li- uh, limit was reached, that is fluid, I'm not sure why it was settled on twelve, perhaps it was one a month. That was the original thinking, I'm not quite sure.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, hearing, seeing none. Be resolved, and this will be a recorded vote. Be resolved that council give third reading to bylaw number four three eight four being the private approach bylaw as presented. Could I have a mover please? Or did I? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Slaker, um, Counselor Feeblecorn seconded. Any, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Care, is those opposed? Counselor Mondo opposed. Thank you. The approval of accounts, January fourth, twenty twenty four, check detail report. Be resolved that council approved the January fourth, twenty twenty four, check detail report and. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Slaker, secondar. Counselor Feeblecorn, any comments? Counselor Feeblecorn?
Um, just in regards to the Prairie bylaw for animal control. Um, how, how does that work again in terms of, um, Kristanky's involvement with animal control and Prairie bylaw, they do the same?
No, Prairie bylaw was doing animal control. That was supposed to have been changed two years ago, look into a different option, because that's over two thousand dollars a month, it's really. Not, not cost effective at all. But I understand, um, our new protective services manager is looking at another option.
Okay.
For, for, um, yeah, for animal. And Counselor Slaker?
Uh, no question for thinking, uh, because Tommy, actually, I'm getting better. Um, and there was no reply for a different.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item is care correspondence for action, our meeting January eleventh in Stonewall. Be resolved that be authorized to attend the R meeting which is being held January eleventh, twenty twenty four in Stonewall, could I have a mover please? Counselor Slaker, seconded by Counselor Mondo, I mean, sorry, Counselor Feeblecorn. Moved by Counselor Feeblecorn, seconded by Counselor Mondo, who will be there attending the, uh? Counselor Moretti? I assume, I know we had gotten an email, a response is needed by January the fifth. Did you all respond? So Jen does not, okay, so then be it resolved that. Counselors Moretti, Feeblecorn, Slaker and Deputy Mayor Doran Boss be authorized to attend the R meeting being held on the eleventh, Stonewall, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item Manitoba Softball Hall of Fame, um, third, first requesting support. Um, we've had these come up in the past, because I mean, Counselor Hunt, perhaps you can confirm, I believe it's a couple of years ago, we had a St. Andrews president.
Yes, um.
Fame, so then we continue to, we're on their mailing list.
So they keep on sending, oh, I, sorry, can, can I make a comment?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh, but so back in two thousand eighteen, I believe it was, I think it's in this listing here that, uh, David Botch. Was inducted into the softball hall of fame, so we had bought a table for the family, uh, in, in, in support of that. Recognition and they keep on sending and I went through the list, there's no one from St. Andrews like on that list, so I would. I would be inclined to accept this for information purposes, um, so that's why we keep on getting the, the letter from them is because. Back in two thousand eighteen, it was David Botch that was recognized and inducted into the softball hall of fame.
Thank you, so council, are you in favor to, um, file for information? Thank you. Next item is the correspondence for information, does anybody have any comments or questions on any of the attached information? Okay, and then we move on to, there's no older unfinished business, new business, um. Be it resolved that council authorized the hiring of A.J. Bowen. As a member of the Matlock Fire Hall as recommended by the Fire Chief and Leadership Committee, could I have a mover please? Counselor Mondo, seconded by Count, uh, Deputy Mayor Doran Boss, any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
We don't have any in camera. It resolve that council meeting be adjourned at six twenty four P M, could I have a mover please? Counselor Slaker, seconded by Counselor Mondo, all in favor? Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone, take care.
Thank you, Lori.
Ken, all done, thanks.